Thursday, February 7th, 2019. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of Friday, January 25th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Next, item, payments are going around. Discussion and vote on PK tuition schedule. Dr. Cabral?
Just so that you know, we're on the board. It just came in as well. If you have any questions for her about this also in terms of the budget. But Kelly Moroso, who is the special education coordinator for early year children, has been working with Teresa Sinner, the director of special education, to come up with a new configuration for our pre-K schedule. This was something that you'll remember, we discussed last year, but were unable to hammer out the details in time for a pre-K moment. And so did make some changes, actually. It's definitely very helpful in working with them to really come up with the configuration that was in the best interest of the students. According to Kelly Moroso, the three-day program that we had is not really advantageous to the students. They really needed a little bit more time. And so we have limited it to only a four-day, uh, four half-day program, five half-day program, and five full-day program. And so the schedule is also more in line with the teacher's contract for the teachers to make sure that they have actual preparation periods and lunch periods. It is significantly different from the schedule presented last year, but there definitely were some different tweaks to it. And so you have the three different configurations here. The schedules have had different programs integrated into the program. And so not only are we asking you to take a look at that, but also at the tuition rates. We also had told you previously that we didn't have any kind of sliding scale in terms of tuition. So we are not gonna have the same program that we have with kindergarten, but we are proposing like kindergarten. Second, for multiple siblings, the first sibling is one tuition, but then multiple siblings are half as we do with kindergarten. For qualifying families, we would offer either a one-third or one-quarter discount on tuition based on financial need, which they would submit the same paperwork that we do for the federal guidelines for free and reduced lunch. Lunch, of course, doesn't apply to this program because it's pre-K. However, we're gonna use those guidelines to determine financial need. And so parents will be informed. The will count to a pre- tuition for this year. We're doing this whole configuration, tuition part, not the schedule. But the tuition part really is being done as a pilot this year. Some of this is unanticipated expenses. We're not sure exactly how many people, for example, will take advantage of tuition, reimbursement of the tuition, payment scans, schedule, the reduction. So we need to see how this goes for this year. Will we revisit it?
What are, am I missing seeing the tuition rate? Cause I don't recall. I don't recall what it was. I don't know that it's in your packet. Do you have the actual rates of tuition?
Yeah.
The actual, what are we charging?
So for a five-day full day, it's $4,000 a year. Just go over it. It may not be 100% accurate. I believe the five half-day session is $2,250 per year.
A four-day half-day?
Four-day half-day, I think it's $2,500 per year. Cause I'm getting information from other districts and just setting up a chart with comparison. It's interesting. Districts are all over the map with their tuition for pre-K. Some are significantly higher than ours for some sessions, but not others. Some are right about where we are. I don't know that there's any that are lower. There might be a few that are just lower by a little bit. So I wanna get that data. Set comparable districts and whatever they're charging.
The schedules, like?
Not everybody. Some have no five-day session at all. And then there's just varying combinations of that. So I set it up with our grid. You know, currently, we still have three half-day, four half-day, five half-day, five full-day. And as Lisa said, next year, we'll go to four half-day, five half-day, five full-day. So I'll get that data and share that with Lisa. But this will be the tuition schedule for next year. We're advertising it now.
Right.
And now is the pre-K registration period. So that is what we're advertising for next year.
And if I recall, the tuition from this goes into the sped revolving account? Is that where it goes? Okay. And then gets used to?
Pay for a teacher and the.
Okay. Thank you.
Goes right back to funding.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Do you need us to vote on the schedule or the tuition? Do you need us to vote on the schedule or the?
Tuition or?
The schedule. So we have a memorandum of agreement with the Special Educators Association. So we need you to vote on the memorandum, which talks about the 1920 school year pre-K schedule.
No.
Erica.
As the chair, if you so agree. And the tuition is for your information unless you have objection.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the schedule? All right. So I'll make a motion to agree to the memorandum of agreement between the Easton School Committee and the Easton Educators Association for the 1920 school year. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you.
Do you need us to authorize you to sign the contract or does that?
Do you have the contract?
The memorandum.
The memorandum. You have it here? All right. So I can sign the original. Do you need to?
No, no. I just.
Okay. Um, next item, vote to approve the school committee's annual report to the town. Okay. So you all have a copy. This is the annual report that most of the boards, different boards make every year, and it's included in the town report. I made a couple of other edits to what I sent you, so I just thought I'd go through those first before taking your additional comments, if that's okay. So in the second full paragraph, halfway down, it says, "Mr. Getchel was appointed after a search committee led by Assistant Superintendent Christine Pruitt." So it was reminded that it was not actually a search committee, but a principal profile committee. So I was gonna change that to say, "Mr. Getchel was appointed after a principal profile committee led by Assistant Superintendent Christine Pruitt and comprised of educators, parents, and administrators determined Mr. Getchel fit the instead of criteria." I changed it to "profile." And then identified by the, I deleted the word "search." So the sentence would read, "Mr. Getchel was appointed after a principal profile committee led by Assistant Superintendent Christine Pruitt and comprised of educators, parents, and administrators determined Mr. Getchel fit the profile identified by the committee." So that was the first item. The next, the next paragraph down, the second sentence, it says, "Assistant Superintendent Christine Pruitt led a second search committee." I just took out the word "second." And then, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, it begins with, "The budget continues to be a significant challenge." So if you go about halfway down, it says, "As a result, we added a few critical personnel, most notably..." I changed that into one sentence. So it said, "As a result, we added a few critical personnel, comma, small m, most notably, comma, a developmental skills teacher for grades PK to two," et cetera. I also, um, all the PKs to two, I changed to be a capital P, capital K dash two. Next paragraph down, um, the halfway down the paragraph, "For base repairs alone could total more than $40 million for the three schools." I changed that to $50 million. On the next page, the paragraph that starts with a statement of interest, I took out the sentence that said, "This date triggered a 270-day period in which the town of Easton and the Easton Public Schools must fulfill the requirements set forth by the MSBA." I just took out that sentence. Couple of lines down where I list the people that are on the committee. Jane corrected me that the school business manager is not part of that committee, so I took that item out as well. The next paragraph down where I'm talking about donations, I moved the donation made by the Howe family to be the first one listed. And then onto the last page, um, the paragraph towards the bottom that says, "When I talk about who retired, there was a typo in the last sentence." I'm very mad my spell check didn't pick up. Instead of "wish," I changed it to "wish." And those are just the additional edits I made, so I'm happy to hear other comments and impressions.
Thank you for doing that.
Anybody? Okay. I've got a couple of general things. On the, um, on the second page, that first long paragraph about, you talk about a school planning committee, which is perfect, but then further down, "2008 was a busy year for the school." Let's change that from building to planning, so it's consistent. On the last page, um, the paragraph that begins with, "Our students continue to bring home awards." I might just wanna say, "Some highlights of these achievements include..." Because I'm not sure that this is a comprehensive list. And then, there's one other thing. When you're talking about STEAM, oh, STEAM stuff. And you might've done this on purpose, Jackie, but you say, "For the first time, a STEM discovery conference was organized and run by a student at Oliver Ames High School." Do you wanna name her? Okay, that's what I thought. You didn't.
I felt very strange putting a student's name in here. Unless I would talk to her family.
That's fine. I just, that's what I kinda thought, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure about that.
Would you want to justify that it was for middle school students?
Sure. Um, let's see. "For the first time, a STEM discovery conference was organized and run by a student at Oliver Ames High School for the middle school students."
For a STEM discovery conference for middle school students was organized and run by a student at Oliver.
Let's see, a STEM discovery conference.
For a middle school.
For a middle school. Sure. Thank you.
And then my last comment, and again, this is a question. I don't care one way or the other, but it's kind of a, it's been a pin in my bonnet, which is under the, um, under the first page, under the district's capital needs. You talk about, um, the replacement of the Richardson-Holmstead cafeteria floor and for technology and in computers, you put in parentheses, you put computers, projectors, iPads, and smart boards. I don't know if we wanna say replacement technology as opposed to, this is not buying our strategic new moving forward technology. I don't know how you would say that, Jackie, but I just, I think it's important that we, that we stay focused on the fact that what we're doing with capital money is continuing to keep what we have current. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not moving forward in terms of our strategic plan as it related to technology.
So were all of those purchases just replacement, or were any of them in addition? Do you know?
From capital?
Yeah.
Or just replacements?
So doesn't that replacement ahead of Richardson School, Richardson-Holmstead, go along with replacement for technology?
No. The, yeah.
Replacement of the Richardson-Holmstead cafeteria for?
And for technology.
And for replacement of technology.
So you wanna?
Yeah.
And is it iPads or Chromebooks?
Both.
Oh, it is? Okay.
So Chromebooks, probably. So Chromebooks, what do you think?
Well, no, I mean, it doesn't matter, cause it says computers, which are Chromebooks, so that's fine.
I know that's minor, but.
It's fine.
Uh, just to, again, the second line of that, where it says Richardson-Holmstead cafeteria floor, was actually the kitchen floor in the cafeteria. I just didn't want people to think that there were cafeteria proper had been replaced.
Yeah. Yep.
That was it?
Okay.
You did a really good job on these guys.
Thank you. Always fun to train you every year. Anything else? Nothing else? Okay. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the edits discussed tonight, the 2018 annual report of the Easton School Committee. Do I have a second? All in favor? So Lynn, I'll put these edits in and get them to you tomorrow. Thank you. Sure. That'll be great. Thank you. Okay. Next item on agenda. Personnel changes, retirements. Dr. Cabral, quite a list.
A significant list of retirements in terms of number, we had five for this evening, but also in terms of impact, of course. It's very difficult to see all of this talented experience go straight out the door, but as Caroline usually says, I'll say it for her tonight, so many of those are losses to grandbabies, which is not different this evening. And so we're very happy for them, but I will do one at a time with you, if that's okay, because you probably want to read their letters. So first, Janice Nausaisian is here tonight, is a well-known Center School kindergarten teacher. Janice began her time in the Easton Public Schools in 1995 as a half-time kindergarten teacher, half-day kindergarten teacher at Morrell Hall. In 97, she was appointed to full-time kindergarten at Morrell Hall. She transferred to Center School in 2014, and she's been a kindergarten teacher there ever since. She's been with the public schools for 24 years. She plans to retire at the end of this school year. I will let her tell you why. She also, however, runs the conversational English course for our parents and the members of our community, which has been a phenomenal success, a labor of love, and has really brought a great deal of benefit to the people that have participated, have been to them since some of the days, and they are remarkable in what they offer in terms of not only helping them with conversational English, but establishing that community and knowing that people like Mrs. Nausaisian care a lot about them. So we thank her for her service, for sure.
Do you wanna read the letter?
Sure. This is, this is Nausaisian's letter. Dear Dr. Cabral, please accept this letter as my resignation for the purposes of retirement as a teacher in the Easton Public School District effective on June 30th, 2019. It has been my honor to serve this community as a kindergarten teacher. Although I look forward to the next exciting stage of my life, it will be difficult to leave so many kind and caring students, parents, staff, and administrators. It was a privilege to teach at both Morrell Hall and Center School and to be a part of the professional staff of the Easton Public School District, respectfully, Janice Nausaisian. I can't talk, cause I'm just not proud. She's awesome though. She's been around, she's had a lot of my relatives, and she, she was a cornerstone at Morrell Hall for so many years, so you're gonna love retirement, that's all I can say. So I.
You could run for school committee, too.
So I'd just like to thank you for your many years of service. The impact that you've had on lots of children throughout the district and their parents is really important, and you're such an important part of the community. Thank you so much, and enjoy it.
Thank you. So I will make a motion. Do you wanna make a motion, Nancy?
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Janice Nausaisian.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Second, Carol Goldenberg, is the Richardson-Holmstead speech and language pathologist. She began her time in the Easton Public Schools in 1998 as a speech and language pathologist at, on the Holmstead side of the Richardson-Holmstead School. She's been with the district for 21 years, and she also plans to retire at the end of the school year.
And so I'll read her letter. It says, "Dear Dr. Cabral, it is with mixed emotions that I am submitting my letter of intent to retire from my position as a speech language pathologist at the Richardson-Holmstead School at the close of the school year effective June 30th, 2019. I have enjoyed my full-time position for the last 21 years at RO, as well as a variety of part-time speech positions for eight years previous to my full-time appointment. It has been, it has truly been a pleasure to work with the students, staff, faculty, and administration throughout my tenure. I look forward to the next chapter in my life as a retiree."
And I'm also going to throw this in there. Carol is fabulous. She just, every day, she, and again, another rock in the people that we have. She is so professional and caring, and she's just a wonderful person. I think she has three sons. Is that correct? Three sons who adore her, as we all do. So we wish her the best. So do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Do you? Okay. So I make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Carol Goldenberg.
Second? All in favor?
Next. Paraprofessional at Morrell Hall. Barbara Haynes began working at ETS in 1998 as instructional aide at Parkview School. In 2000, Barbara was transferred to Morrell Hall as a paraprofessional. She's been with the district for 31 years, and she plans to retire at the end of March.
Did you wanna read the other? Okay.
Dear Mr. Higgins, after more than 30 years as a paraprofessional, it is time for me to retire. My plan is to retire at the end of March 2019, therefore, March 29th will be my last working day. I have always been fond of my role working with small groups of elementary school children. The kids are fun to work with in the small groups. Over the years, I've worked in many classrooms, have enjoyed getting to know many different teachers, and have observed various teaching styles. I have learned a lot from each of them. Furthermore, I appreciate the kindness and compassion that you show all staff and children. I will miss working with each of you. Please accept my resignation and know that I have truly enjoyed my job."
Lovely letter.
So 31 years is, shows an incredible dedication to the kids in the classrooms. And I think sometimes the importance of paraprofessionals and the role they play as part of a team in the classroom is really critical. So first of all, I'd like to thank Barbara for her many years of dedication to the district and wish her much fun with retirement.
She, and again, she's another cornerstone at Morrell Hall, cause I think she's worked with everybody there. And she, again, talented and just so professional and just a wonderful, wonderful woman.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept with regret Mrs. Haynes's retirement. Do I have a second? Second? All in favor?
At the Eastern Public School, grade six teacher Donna McDonald began in 1997 as sub at Morrell Hall Center and the Holmstead side of the Richardson-Holmstead School. She was appointed as a long-term sub first-grade teacher at Center School in 1998. In 1999, she was appointed to a full-time position at Center School as a first-grade teacher, and in 2000, she moved to grade two at Center and grade three at the Richardson School in 2004. In 2011, she transferred to Easton Middle School as a grade six teacher, where she remains today. Donna's been with the district for 22 years, and she plans to retire at the end of the school year.
So her letter says, "Dear Superintendent Cabral, I am writing this letter to inform you that I will be retiring from my current position as sixth-grade teacher at Easton Middle School. My retirement will become effective on July 9th, 2019. I would like to thank you, Principal Luke Carroll, and the Easton School Committee for giving me the opportunity to serve over the past 20-plus years in my various positions at Center School, Richardson-Holmstead, and Easton Middle School. The relationships that I have formed over the years will not soon be forgotten. I will miss my colleagues as well as my students. Thank you again for all your support throughout the years."
So I worked with Donna when the sixth grade came up to the middle school, and she's also math and science, so we'd meet a lot. And she is a very good math teacher and science teacher, but also a real go-getter in the sixth grade. Like she, you know, people go to her for advice on math and things like that, and her students really like her. So she is going to be missed, for sure. She's great. So I'll make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Donna McDonald.
Second? All in favor?
Finally, for tonight, we go to Oliver Ames High School. Science teacher Nancy Curtin gave her, gave her time with the Eastern Public Schools as a sub in 2000. She was appointed at a long, as a long-term sub at OA in January of 2001. She became the chemistry teacher in OA in September 2001, where she remains today. She's been with the district for 19 years, and she plans to retire at the end of the school year as well.
So her letter says, "Dear Dr. Cabral, I am writing to inform you in the Eastern Public Schools of my intent to retire from my teaching position at Oliver Ames High School at the conclusion of the 2018-19 school year. My last day will effectively be June 30th, 2019, to allow for potential snow days that may occur before the end of this year. I wanted to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to the many faculty, staff, and students throughout the district that have helped to make my teaching experience both personally and professionally rewarding over the last 19 years. I have felt very fortunate to be part of a caring and supportive community. I have greatly enjoyed the many roles I have had during my career at OA in the areas of curriculum development, NEASC inspections, administrative committees, continuing education programs, mentoring, advising, and of course, teaching. While I will miss my daily interactions with friends, colleagues, and students, I am very excited about my impending retirement and all that it offers. It is my understanding that you will initiate the retirement process within the district upon receipt of this letter. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional information."
So Nancy's been a science teacher for a long time. She was also my younger son's class advisor along with Mrs. Schleicher, and those two make quite a team. And she is just a fabulous science teacher. The kids speak so wonderfully about her and her teaching, and that they come out of class with just that knowledge and what they need to be prepared for the next level. So she will definitely be missed, as all will.
Yeah. So I will make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Nancy Curtin. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I can see how.
Wow, that's a lot.
The special these educators are and how much they need to our Eastern Public School family, where we're really lucky to have had them. Be such an integral part of the community and just so grateful for all they've given our students over the years.
Absolutely. All right. Next item is the 2019-20. Can't believe it. School calendar second reading, Dr. Cabral.
At the last meeting, three drafts were presented to the committee. A change was requested to make December 23rd a half-day. We had talked about that in terms of the school buildings and so forth. So we've done that, and Christine will go over the other changes that were done with you. This is for a possible vote to approve one of the drafts.
Okay.
So we are requesting that the professional development days actually not be at the start of the school year, before school for the, for the 2019-20 calendar. We are proposing that the two days, one be held in October and one be held in November. While we don't love to extend long weekends because of potential, potentially extending absences that may occur, we also recognize that it is an opportunity for families if they do want to travel, so it might be. so it might be a little bit more convenient for them. So our two days for professional development days that we're proposing are October eleventh, which was in the original calendars, as well as November twelfth, which is the Tuesday after rather than another Friday before the long weekend. With that being said, some of, you'll see a reflection of some of the days we moved as far as, the, the final day will be moved, the final days are moved to reflect the professional development day not being at the start of the year.
Okay. Can we comment? Okay. All right, comment, definitely, I like the two professional days being October and November. I found as a teacher, the beginning of the school year is crazy and you're trying to do a hundred different things. And I think that the teacher's focus will be more focused in October and November than it would be thinking, I gotta get my room ready, I gotta do this, you know, the hundred things that go on. My other comment, and you guys know what I'm gonna say, is the third draft where Labor Day is September second. I just feel like why this would add one more day, I believe, one more day onto the school year, but have the teachers start the third, the kids start the fourth. I know you had said something about the AP kids, but I don't know. I just feel like the AP kids is about a hundred of them and there's about three thousand other kids. And I, I remember last year, people either emailed, I had a few people that emailed me or called me about not having that long, the extra-long Labor Day weekend. Like the kids are in school, why didn't they get Friday off or what, you know? And I know teachers have plans too, but it's not just because of them. I just feel like that one more day, so we'd move it over to June seventeenth, which isn't outrageous. I mean, that's, and who knows what the weather will be? I mean, forty-one years ago, we were dealing with the blizzard of seventy-eight and we had three weeks off from school, so I don't know. It's just a thing. So anyway, that's my two cents and I'm gonna, I would like to move, or if it could be revised, draft three, go to teachers' first day, September third, kids' first day, September fourth. I do like the change in the professional development.
So I, I'm disagreeing.
I know, go ahead. I know. And I can hear Caroline's voice already. She's already yapping.
And, and just because I'm assuming it's the same, it's the same conversation that we had last time. While I understand that it might be nice to extend the summer for one or two more days for that long weekend, I, I think in balance, to have those couple of days more to get things ready, get kids into the routine, to get people settled in a classroom, and then to be able to hit the ground, hopefully, running the next week is really important for our students. Again, I'm gonna ask though, I'm assuming, you know, I wanna make sure that we've gotten the appropriate feedback from our administrators and that they get the appropriate feedback from the staff because I think what we heard at our last school committee meeting is that the preference in that regard is to really start before the holiday.
Well, we haven't done a survey or anything like that?
No, I don't, yeah, no. But it's not, this isn't done in isolation, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The feedback that I shared with you last time was the only feedback I really received from the administration in terms of the high school. Because it shortens the amount of time that they have to prepare, prepare for exams. Seniors get out earlier. It just shortens by about a week. So I just shared that feedback.
Why would the PD, why was the PD schedule changed?
That was the request of the Teachers Union.
Okay. And, all right.
I am noticing though, as I'm looking at this, that I don't know if this is, this was an oversight on my part, that if we look at this, we have the twelfth as the professional development day, so students would not be in school that day. And then the fourteenth is an early release day for the high school.
Right.
So that seems like a very...
That's fair conferences.
Says eleven there. I'm sorry, November twelfth.
Okay. I'm looking at November.
The eleventh is the holiday, right? And then the twelfth would be off and they'd be back one day and then the fourteenth.
That would be very choppy for the, for the high school, so.
And I know you like to do, you like to do conferences every pork cut time, but that was my question the last time. Why couldn't November fourteenth go along with December fifth?
Because the high school is on quarters and the other schools are on trimester.
But you know, with everything being on X two, like parents can go and look and see the grades and, and if they do have a concern with a teacher, they can make an appointment ahead of time. It ju, I agree. I, I feel like you got a day off and then the high school kids have a half a day on the Thursday. Like if they all just went on the December fifth, I don't know.
That probably was the strongest feedback we got from teachers. The high school wanted to have that conference day near where their days go. And the elementary wanted it near where their days go.
Right, okay.
During the presidential elections, we traditionally have the professional development.
You would've had it on November fifth, right?
Because there is not an elec, there is an election, but it's not as high. I spoke with the town, with Danielle and she had said that it would not be, she does not foresee being an issue this year.
Okay. And the other thing that I'm just gonna pop in here. So we, we're closing the twenty-third, we're not doing the half-day, which makes so much sense, December twenty-third. What about January second and third? Would it save us a remarkable amount of money if we didn't open the schools on the second and third? January second and third? And then came back on the sixth?
We are open on the second and third.
But if we closed on the second and third, would that save us heating money, you know, whatever kind of money? I don't know. And come back on January sixth?
And then we'd have to extend the school year.
So then the last day would be June fifteenth?
No.
Yes.
No, not on this one. If you're doing your...
I'm on draft one. I'm on draft one.
I know, but I thought you were...
No, I, yeah. I'm the only one that's gonna vote for the other one. But on draft one, if you, if you have school off January second and third, you may get a two-week vacation and come back January sixth. That moves the last day to Monday, the fifteenth, which is a half-day. So that's probably not the brightest thing in the world to do. But just thinking about heating costs, January second and third. And if it was on my other one, it would move it over to the nineteenth, June nineteenth.
Just throwing it out there.
I don't know how much money the schools all use in a day in the winter.
I'm just going back to the professional development days.
Yes.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have the eleventh, the October date be on the fifteenth and the November date be on the eighth, so that week is not a long one?
Makes sense.
Say that again? Yeah, I see what you're saying.
October, the October date be the fifteenth?
Instead of the eleventh?
Instead of the eleventh? And the November date be on the eighth? So they'd still both be a long weekend, you just flip whether it's a Friday long weekend or a Tuesday.
I mean, to me, the, the October, I don't, it doesn't, it's kind of six of one, how does it add? But the November one, that does seem to make a little more sense, I think? Just because like you said, then it's not so choppy for that week? I don't know, what everyone else thinks?
Makes sense.
Is that an issue to, does it matter?
I don't think, just trying to think about would, we're trying to reduce absenteeism.
Right, right.
Because we are now held accountable as a district, grades one through twelve, through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we, when a child misses more than ten days, whether it's excused or not, that actually becomes part of our accountability measures. So we're really trying to decrease the number of absenteeisms within the district.
Okay.
In fact, two of our schools were, were, did not receive full credit because of the level of absenteeism.
No kidding?
So, which was shared in the presentation for MCAS. So that's where we're concerned about this, backing it up to a weekend because it might promote more absenteeism.
I see, okay.
Backing it up to a long weekend.
Yeah.
Because it might, yeah. And so looking at it is trying to think, would people take, if we have the, the professional development day on a Tuesday, would they then take Friday off? If we have a professional development day on Friday, would they, would they then take Tuesday off?
Right.
To extend it even more?
Yeah.
That is what, that is what happened the last time we did this, this two years ago.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you remember the number? You don't remember the number?
Yeah, it was really hundreds.
Really?
Well, because...
So it was less than Tuesday?
Oh, yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's still a lot of kids, right?
And then when the Patriots keep running the Super Bowl.
Just kidding.
Keep going.
So can I ask a quick question about the difference between one and two in terms of the fact that, that one gives you just, when, at the start of school, you start Tuesday and Wednesday and it gives you Thursday and Friday versus the other ones, you start Wednesday and Thursday and it gives you Friday? What was the thinking there? I mean, from my perspective, two days in and then two days off, wouldn't it make more sense to scooch it to the, to the second option? But I'd like to know why. Let's just, let's just do it this way and see. Last share of the feedback was that version two, draft two, was the more desirable from the principals. The teachers came back, or the staff, sorry, came back the twenty-eighth. And then the first day was that Thursday. That's what I wanted to hear. But one, I'm sorry, it's draft, draft one or two were the two more desirable ones for, from the principal's perspective.
Okay. So do you want, do you, do you want us to vote on this? Or do you wanna think about what you wanna do with the PD first? Or what, what do you, what would you prefer?
Can't we make the change here if we want to? Yeah, I think it would make sense to have the, that have the November date be the eighth rather than the twelfth. I think that definitely makes sense. And I apologize for not having that here in the first place. I would propose that the October date be on the, remain on the eleventh, I guess.
Stay on the one, if you say?
And then change the November to the eighth?
Yes. So have two Fridays.
So they're both Fridays.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
It becomes the...
Yeah.
Is March twentieth the science only yet?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just, I, I'm, I'm thinking that we may wanna vote on this tonight because of the fact that it's, I have to imagine that parents are starting to wonder what the calendar is going to look like for next year.
We do usually have it by the end of January.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's a significant change, we could bring it back to, if, you know, if you request something.
Okay, so with the understanding that on all three calendar options, in November, the PD day will be on the eighth rather than the fourteenth?
Rather than the twelfth.
Twelfth. Rather than the twelfth, I'm sorry. No?
Yes.
Yes.
The Friday. And that following week, then you'd have Monday off, then you'd have school Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the half-day on Thursday. For the high school. For the high school, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so somebody wanna make a motion for one of the calendars?
Sure.
I'm gonna make a note, motion that next year's school, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty school calendar draft number two is presented here this evening with the changes that we've discussed. Sorry, Nancy.
It's all right.
So I'll, I'll second that.
I'm bad at it.
All in favor of draft two? Am I, shall I have a hand up?
Yeah.
And then, Nancy, you wanna make, those opposed? Do you wanna make a motion for the other calendar? Or do you even wanna bother to?
No, it's just three of them.
Okay.
Well, it's actually Caroline, it should be four of them.
So draft two it is. Okay, next item, public comment. Does anyone have a public comment? No. No public comment. Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral? Assistant superintendent notes, Mr. Pruitt?
Of course I have. Our, last week, our middle school teacher, math teachers and learning specialists participated in a two-day training focused on the new math program that they are using called illustrative. The professional development day was personalized as there were four planning sessions to prepare for the day. It was quite intense. Teacher feedback was very positive with great suggested next steps around implementation and continuous planning. It was a wonderful experience and they had breakout sessions throughout the days as well to make it more personalized, which was nice rather than a prepackaged professional development. Last week, I was able to stop by the Eastern YMCA to see our grade two students from Moro Hall participate in the Waterwise program. I just wanna reiterate how important that partnership is. And just to remind everyone, Waterwise is the water safety program that a lot of second grade students in the Eastern Public Schools participated. And we're very thankful to our partnership with the Old Colony YMCA, especially the Eastern Y, the Eastern Branch, for that partnership. It was so fun to watch all of them and it was a freezing, freezing day and they were all in their bathing suits, ready to jump in.
Thank you.
I, last week, David Twombly and I met with Chief Partridge and S.R. Awkins to prepare for the paraprofessional professional development set to occur in March around school safety. During the professional development, the paraprofessionals will review the protocols and simulations that the teachers went through in November. We discussed running professional development over the summer for custodians and other various teen, other, and other various times for secretaries and clerical. So that is still on the, on our map. We also reviewed the November feedback together as a group, which was very, very positive. So it was nice to sit together as a group and review that feedback and have those discussions. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. Yes. School committee notes?
I've got just two little, two little notes. One is just, I know that, was it last week, that the, the exchange students at the middle school were here and left? So I, I kind of heard some buzz about that program from folks in the community who had students staying with them. So I'd like to, again, thank our administrators for coordinating that, for Luke and the teachers welcoming those students to the schools, and for the parents in the community who hosted students. Those, these kinds of exchanges are so important for our students in terms of building a sense of global awareness. And so it just makes me so happy that we're doing something like that. So the other thing, just a couple of quick things up at the high school is I know they had Poetry Out Loud and I know that that was a great success as well. And I think it was Aiden Marcus who came in first. And then the only, the, I did see a tweet from, I think it was the art, our art, that the scholastic, scholastic awards for artists, that we have nine kids who are gonna go on to nationals, which is a really great...
There'd be more awards than last year. Last year was a big year.
Our kids continue to do well. And again, I, I know that this is just a sampling of all the things that go on, you know, there's lots of athletic accomplishments, there's lots of things that are going on at the primary schools and the upper elementary school. But those were the things that just jumped into my head. One other note, or actually two. At last evening's school building, school planning committee meeting, we had a discussion and we are going to be holding two more community forums just so that we can continue the process as the project moves forward to keep people connected and involved in this project. So one of the forums will be March sixth at R.O. Cafeteria and the other one will be April eleventh at the OA CAF. Six-thirty to eight-thirty, same as the previous ones. And we'll be doing our usual, kind of getting the notices out as we did last time.
Great.
So, so that was good. And just to also be clear that at this point, the committee is now focused on four options, which is the two, at, at Center School, the smaller enrollment as a renovation in addition, at Center School...
At Center School, the smaller enrollment as a new building. And then at Parkview, the larger district-wide enrollment as a renovation in addition. And at Parkview, the larger district-wide enrollment as a new building. So that's what we will continue to explore and, and get feedback on as we continue through the feasibility phase. And municipal building committee had a meeting last night about the roof, the, at RO.
Flat portion of the RO.
Yep, the flat portion of the RO roof. And the feedback was really good, and it's moving, I think that, that David actually did the RFS today, maybe. It was going into the right, so.
And just to add really quickly to the school planning committee, they started a very extensive traffic study today over the whole entire campus, the main campus. So it will, it is to focus on if a large building were built at the Parkview site. However, they understand that there could be implications for the greater campus, and so they're looking at the entire campus to see what might be done to sort of mitigate any effect.
And just to give folks a sense of how comprehensive it's going to be, somebody asked last night at school planning, this is a ten-week study. So this isn't something that they come in and come out and do really fast. Over a course of ten weeks, they are going to be looking at traffic on that campus.
And they will make recommendations.
Great. Anything else?
Yes. Last Thursday, I attended the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, I guess, should we call it? But what was very interesting about it, a young, a girl that's a senior, and I can't remember her first name, but her last name's Chang. She runs a group, a club at the high school, and they have a bake sale every now and then. Grace, thank you. I couldn't think of her name. And they make, they cook and sell items for the bake sale, and then take those profits and donate them to Main Spring House in Brockton. And it was really, she was honored. And I don't know if you know the Raples from Personal Best Karate, who I think have dealt with every single student that, you know, our teachers have dealt with. And they retired, so they were honored, and just a fabulous couple. But also Amanda Clean and Drew Harrington, both graduates of Oliver Ames High School. And they have Yasuo frozen Greek yogurt. So they were honored for their, you know, making their business so successful. So it was a very nice night, and a lot of former students there and things like that. So it was really, really nice. So that was it. And then last Friday, I think it was last Friday, the tempo night, fabulous. So very, can't wait for the play. Okay. That's it for me.
Anything else? No, okay. Okay, then I will make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association, Teachers Unit, and Paraprofessional Unit, and the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Custodial Unit. In my opinion, having this discussion in public will be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. We will return to open session, however. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pull the committee?
Perhaps, yes.
Wiseman, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Martin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good night. To our meeting, February seventh, two thousand and nineteen, back to open session. The only item on our agenda is discussion and vote on the Eastern Educators Association Unit A Teachers Contract. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Eastern School Committee and the Eastern Educators Association. Do I have a second? All in favor? Great. Gonna make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.